...to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The purpose of this meeting, it's a special meeting called or ordered by the supervisors in regards to the stormwater issues over the 28th and McKee Road area, over to the cul-de-sac. And we do have a presentation and a recommended plan of action. Making the presentation will be Mill Creek Township Solicitor Mark Shaw, along with the assistance of our Engineering Department and Planning Department as needed. I'm going to ask that if there are any questions or comments, that if you could please hold them until the end. We will have a question and answer period at the end of this meeting. I do want to also state for the record not to rush anybody, we have a meeting at 7:00, a regular meeting, and we would hope that we don't go over to get into that timeframe. So, we'll keep it right to the point there, and so if you would, I'll just turn it over to our Solicitor, Mark Shaw.
Good evening, everyone. We thought this was the best forum, appropriate forum, to try to lay out to the work that we've done in terms of trying to identify the issues with respect to 28th Street and some of the solutions and options we've investigated, as well as present a recommended plan of action moving forward for the township. Just so you're all familiar, obviously, this is the current configuration of the 28th Street storm sewer. In blue, it's outlined in blue, and you can see in the area, this area here, this is where the channel is, it's along Joe's Gym. You have the larger pipe system here than the rest of the pipe system that we did. A little bit of history on the piping underneath 26th Street, as best we can tell, 1938 there was known to be a 60-inch pipe that had been installed by PennDOT, most likely the predecessor of PennDOT, has gone through a few name changes since then. 1941, that 60-inch pipe was replaced by another 60-inch pipe. In 1956, there's documentation showing that there was a project that planned a 24-foot extension of that 60-inch pipe, but ultimately, in the as-built, that pipe was deleted and the drawings showed that in its place, there was a 12-foot 48-inch pipe and a 12-foot 42-inch pipe. And then in September of 2009, Mill Creek installed 100-foot length of 42-inch pipe on the end of that PennDOT pipe system. And the rationale behind that was that prior to that project, PennDOT couldn't react quickly enough due to kind of its large responsibility area, and the township really had no ability to clean out the debris that would block that piping due to accessibility issues. The piping of 42 and 48 60-inch pipe were at such a depth that the township was unable, in an emergency situation, to really access that easily to remove material that might be blocking that inlet. So, the township installed this extension and assumed the responsibility to protect its residents from flooding due to debris blocking that pipe inlet. A little bit of history, this is the 1900 USGS survey of the area, and you can see where the red arrow shows a stream that's actually located in the 28th Street area, and the black arrows are showing kind of the drainage flow towards that stream. And essentially, this highlights and emphasizes that, you know, that 28th Street area really is the low spot, lower area for this drainage area. Just something to keep in mind when trying to come find a solution, at the end of the day, the water's going to go where it wants to go, and this is where it's always wanted to go. Terms of the actions that Mill Creek has taken, in July of 2017, Mill Creek cleaned out approximately 1,000 feet of the 65-inch by 40-inch stormwater archpipe that runs along the backyards of the properties on 28th Street, and you can see it's highlighted on this depiction here. And then also, at that same time, Mill Creek cleaned out the two 24-inch pipes, stormwater pipes that feed into that archpipe that run along both Contessa and Madera, and again, that highlighted area shows those two areas. That cost the township because they had to hire a third party to do that work, approximately $100,000. And also, since that time, township crews have been able to clean out, those 24-inch pipes have been cleaned out a couple of times since then. In addition, in that general time period, the township secured a perpetual maintenance permit from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, and pursuant to that permit, cleaned out the channel adjacent to Joe's Gym. Important things to know about this permit is that township can only do work between May 1 and August 31 of each year due to issues with respect to fish downstream in Wilkins Run. We have to give DDP 15 days' notice before that work begins, and in addition, we can't expand or deepen the channel, we can only clean out the sediment that's filled into the channel, so we've got to go back to its original contours, we can't make it any wider or any larger or any deeper. And we also continue to be diligent in keeping the debris catcher in the channel near 26th Street clear of debris. And this shows generally the location of the debris catcher, as well as the area that's covered by that permit, which is that whole channel. In addition, in the fall of 2017, because I think in one of the storm events at least, there were some sewer backups that had occurred in some of the basements, Mill Creek proceeded to grout and seal all of the sewer lines in the highlighted area that's shown here to prevent stormwater from entering those lines and causing sanitary sewer backups. And then, following up on that in 2018, the township completed the sewer grouting and sealing for the balance of the sewer lines that feed into this area, that are south of this area, that actually go down past Neptune Drive. And the cost of doing that, both in 2017 and '18, the total is approximately $200,000. The work that the township has done, at least from what we can see and what we've been able to evaluate, appears to have at least reduced the flooding potential along 28th Street. Since the township's actions, we went back and looked at some of the storm events and the rain events that have occurred, and no flooding was reported to the township during these large storm events. And this is kind of the list of the various events, and, you know, they range in terms of, the first one, it was an inch and 1.13 inches in an hour, somewhere eight tenths of an inch in four hours, 1.23 in six hours. And we compared that to some of the rain events where we knew there were reported flood events before the township did any work. And there are comparable flows and rain events that were flooding before that haven't flooded since that point in time, and so we think that what we've done, in fact, has at least reduced the potential of flooding along 28th Street. It certainly hasn't fixed it, the thing you need to recognize is, at the end of the day, we can't predict ultimately the size of the storm events that may occur. You know, the storm systems are designed to handle certain types of events, they're not, they're not, and they can't be designed ultimately to handle every storm event. I'm not sure you would, we'd have a riot in terms of the cost that it would take to do that throughout the township. So, at some point, you have to make the decision of what size storm event is satisfactory and this appears to at least be helping the situation. So, we've looked at a variety of options that have been discussed, I think, in prior meetings and prior discussions. We looked at the option of removing the 42-inch pipe that the township installed, looked at the option of PennDOT removing the 42- and 48-inch pipes, that's an option that assumes the township pipe would be removed. Looked at the option of PennDOT increasing the size of the 60-inch pipe under 26th Street, again, assuming all the other smaller pipes have been removed. The option of constructing a stormwater basin along the channel on the property adjacent to the channel that's now owned by NLA Real Estate, which is the entity that's constructing the townhomes along that area. And then, lastly, the township removing the archpipe that's beneath the properties north of 28th Street, and return that area to an open channel, which is what it historically had been, and looking back at the 1900s map, and appears to have been what was there, you know, for quite some time. We also looked in the area, the rest of the area, the balance of the area, to determine whether there was any area that we could possibly do any additional basins in, you know, further into the watershed, and there just doesn't appear to be an area that's, that could be used. There was one area that is, I think, a fairly wooded area, but it's also wet, and if it's an area that's already wet, putting a basin in doesn't help because you're already essentially at the groundwater level. So, that creates a challenge from that perspective, because there are certain rules and regulations you have to follow in terms of where you place stormwater basins in relation to where the groundwater depths are. So, we went through each of these options and analyzed what the impact would be and, you know, how viable they would be in terms of whether it made sense to take this action. So, we started with looking at the removal of the 42-inch pipe. And so, our question really was, will the removal of the 42-inch pipe eliminate or significantly diminish flooding along 28th Street? And we looked at it in two ways. First, we performed some modeling of the flows after the removal of the 42-inch pipe, determined the impact of removal on the surface water levels. And then, we also performed calculations of additional storage volume made available by the removal of the 42-inch pipe as compared to the volume of floodwater being stored on 28th Street. So, looking at the first method, the modeling method, we used what's called a hydroflow express extension for ACAD Civil 3D, I'll let my engineer friends explain that to you if anyone has any questions. But that modeled the surface water levels with the 42-inch pipe being removed, and we relied on the survey data that we had of the pipe elevations, as well as estimated elevations of the stormwater backing up behind those pipes. And the result of that analysis was that removal of the township's 42-inch pipe results in a range of zero to approximately maybe a 6-inch reduction in the surface water elevation immediately upstream of the 26th Street piping system, depending upon the assumptions that are being made. So, you need to keep in mind that even though you may have a reduction at this location, it doesn't necessarily mean you're going to have a corresponding reduction upstream, so to speak. It's likely you're only going to have a fraction of that reduction as a function of the elevation changes and other factors that may affect that. So, as a result of this modeling, at least, this modeling was telling us that, you know, any impact of surface water levels caused by the removal of the pipe installed by the township in 2009 would not result in any significant reduction in flooding of 28th Street, where three to four feet of water have been observed in the street in various storm events. So, next, we looked at, you know, the storage capacity that may be gained if you switch out a pipe for an open channel. And so, we first calculated the additional storage capacity that would be available for water backing up behind the piping system. Again, we used survey data of the pipe elevations that we had, as well as estimated the width and depth of the channel that would be created in the absence of the 42-inch township pipe. And we used a side slope that matched the existing channel slopes, which have, and we estimated based on all that, those assumptions, the estimated available storage area was approximately 1,369 cubic yards. We then proceeded to calculate the estimated area of storage available for stormwater for pond on 28th Street, trying to get a sense of how much water do we have there and how much water will ultimately be able to be stored if we have this additional capacity. Using two-foot contour fly road data that we have, that was done by the State of Pennsylvania in 2007, we calculated the maximum height of storage in that area was two feet, nine inches, which fairly equates to the anecdotal stories encouraged in people in terms of the depths of the water. And doing that, that would equate to a total storage on 28th Street of 12,644 cubic yards. So, looking at, you know, 1,369 versus 12,644, really concluded that the potential storage volume gained from removing that pipe really wouldn't have a significant impact on the flooding, there's just not enough, you know, cubic yards to gain to really impact how much water would be stored in the pipe area as opposed to on 28th Street. Some of the other issues that relate to pulling out the pipe, as indicated earlier, the reason the pipe was installed was to reduce the risk of flooding caused by debris blocking the pipe. And really, if you remove it, you still have that concern, you resurrect that issue that you had before. And due to the depth of that pipe system, as I indicated, you know, special equipment is needed to remove that debris accumulating in the inlet. PennDOT does have that type of equipment, but unfortunately, that's not the type of equipment that's stored locally, it's used regionally, and really can't be devised upon to be available if you have an emergency situation. Mill Creek doesn't own that type of equipment, to remove that type of debris, it's a specialized type of equipment, it's not cheap, it's a very expensive piece of equipment as I understand it. And really, like I said, this is why the 42-inch pipe was installed originally, was to enable us to be able to access the type of equipment we had. The location of the pipe is set in such a fashion that our crews can drive back along Joe's Gym, get to that pipe pretty easily with the equipment that we have, and clear it out. The other challenge that arises with respect to removal of the 42-inch pipe deals with the property owners who are adjacent. And the reality is, is that since that pipe has been installed, the one adjacent property owner has built a parking area over it, that would have to be removed and relocated. And then, in addition, reestablishing the channel could negatively impact the stability of some of the buildings that are also on that same side of the property. The channel is relatively very close to the adjacent property, and the buildings on the adjacent property, that's effectively the property line, and there'd be a significant risk of impacting that, those buildings, as well as it significantly increases the difficulty of removing that pipe, as well as the cost of removing that pipe. So, next, we look at, okay, what happens if we remove the 42- and 48-inch pipe? And would that eliminate or significantly diminish the flooding on 28th Street? And here, PennDOT, you know, one of the studies that PennDOT did, that the township worked with them on, and PennDOT agreed to fund, did a study, and that study in December of 2017, analyzed the impact of, in fact, doing that. And they performed modeling, and their report concluded, and I quote, "Replacing the 42-inch culvert with a 60-inch culvert would still cause backwater conditions that would impact the outlet of the stormwater system, i.e. it's still going to flood." Specifically, their model analysis found that the removal of the pipes and replacing it with a 60-inch pipe would result in only a 3.6-inch to 9.6-inch reduction of water surface elevation at 26th Street, depending upon how you configured that 60-inch pipe, which would still cause water to back up and flood 28th Street. We didn't look at the impact of storage here, because it's only a 24-foot distance, it really wouldn't have very much impact in terms of any additional storage capacity. So, based on this, we concluded that removing those two pipes really wouldn't have a significant impact on the flooding elevations of 28th Street. So, we move to the next issue, the next option, what if you enlarged the 60-inch pipe, what does that do? And here, we do have two studies that were performed, and they have been performed evaluating the size of the stormwater pipe on 28th Street, or I should say, on 26th Street. Again, as part of that PennDOT study that was done in December of 2018, PennDOT concluded that if they put in an 84-inch pipe under West 26th Street, that would result in an 8.3-foot decrease in surface water elevation. In addition, in 1974, the township had commissioned a study of the entire township, looking at stormwater and what the systems, what size system stormwater may be needed if watersheds that were identified were built out in a full build-out scenario. And as part of that study, the consultant determined, in fact, that two pipes were needed under 26th Street. There is a 72-inch pipe at the current 60-inch pipe location, as well as an 84-inch pipe that would be located at McKee Road that would go under 26th Street. And again, that was assuming a full build-out scenario, we currently don't have, it's unlikely that we will occur, will have that occur, but it generated that, you know, that type of significant flow and required that size piping to get under there. So, based on that, it does look like, in fact, that if you enlarge the 60-inch pipe under 26th Street, that could have a significant impact of reducing flooding elevations along 28th Street. But that begs the question of, if you do that, then what happens, what's next? So, we looked at, you know, downstream impacts, you know, what will be the effect of eliminating the 42- or 48-inch pipe, now having a 60, or enlarging the 60, what would the impact of that have on downstream properties? Here, the little depiction that shows, you know, where the channel is located, as well as the properties and type of development that exist downstream of the channel. To the left, you've got, I think it used to be the soccer place, it's now, I think, the gymnastics location. In the middle, you have, right to the west of the channel, you have the mobile home park residences that are there. To the right of the channel, there's another business that's located in that area, and then you have a wooded area in the back between there and the railroad tracks. So, although there hasn't been a study that specifically evaluated the downstream impact of removing the 42- or 48-inch, or enlarging the 60-inch, simple analysis of the downstream surface elevations and the pipe sizes that exist downstream really does answer the question in terms of, you know, what kind of impact it even had. Water from the 60-inch pipe flows, and you can see the arrow here, it flows north through a channel for several hundred feet, and then it continues through an area of private property that's relatively flat until you get to the railroad tracks. And then, at the Norfolk Southern Rail Line, there's three rail lines that exist that pass through. The southernmost one is the Norfolk Southern Line, and the two northern ones are the CSX tracks. Once it gets the Norfolk Southern Line, it passes through a 24-inch pipe that doesn't go all the way through the rail lines, it only goes through the Norfolk line. And it goes out into the open space between the tracks, and then, a little bit further to the west, there's another 24-inch pipe that then carries that water over onto the airport side of the property. And then, that runs down along the tracks on that side and connect into a storm system that ultimately connects into a storm system that's attached to another watershed that's a little bit further to the west of the watershed where 28th Street was located. And if you look at the pipe sizes, you know, you've got, you know, arguably a 60- or 84- inch at 26th Street, if you make that change, and a 24-inch downstream. The math doesn't work very well in terms of the flows that, you know, are going to get through a 60- or 84 versus what might get through a 24-inch. And just to kind of give you a sense of the capacities of the pipe, and this is, you know, this is applied to this scenario, but it's just a general sense of what those flows differences might be that could go through the pipes. A 24-inch pipe would have a flow of 58.6 CFS, a 60-inch pipe would have a flow of 711.8 CFS, and an 84-inch pipe would have a flow of 1,745 CFS. Again, that's assuming a full pipe and no head pressure, but just trying to get, trying to compare apples to apples to give you a sense of what the differences are between pipe sizes and how that may ultimately impact or affect flows. The other thing to keep in mind is, as you see here, you know, I show a flat area, and there's a flat area that's approximately 1,500 feet by 450 feet, and the elevations in that area are generally within about a foot of each other. So, it's a relatively flat area that would flood pretty easily with added water, as well as then put the business locations and the residence locations at risk. So, you know, really, the conclusion that we draw from looking at this is that the flows from a pipe larger than or equal to 60 inches, you know, would certainly overwhelm the downstream 24-inch pipe system under the rail lines, you know, and that would result in flooding behind the rail lines, potentially risk harm to the rail lines, as well as the adjacent businesses and residences. One thing to keep in mind is, the two 24-inch pipes being separated creates an issue because the, as water gets through the first 24-inch pipe, it's going to fill in between the tracks, creating another additional, you know, potential risk to the tracks before it starts going through the next 24-inch pipe. The second 24-inch pipe is always going to be lagging a little bit behind the first Looking at the project that you would try to accomplish, in fact, if you're wanting to do this, and one of the problems is, once you start opening up the pipes in one location, where do you stop? You know, you can't really stop the rail lines, because where does that water end up? Well, the airport. You've got to do something to deal with that flow. And then, where does that water go? Well, that water ultimately goes into Wilkins Run. There's already erosion problems with Wilkins Run, and now you've got to go through Wilkins Run before you know it you're after it. And that's part of the challenge of the risk that you run by enlarging the pipes at 26th Street, and then, once you do that, you can't stop because of just the nature of the size of the pipes that are downstream. The '74 study that looked at that, you know, their solution that they had indicated was, you know, if you eliminate those 24-inch pipes, put a large open channel on the south side of the railroad tracks, flowing to the west, ultimately tying into that other watershed, and then putting in a 13-foot diameter pipe under the rail tracks. Not the most feasible solution, but that was, you know, what they put out there back in 1974. Obviously, the cost of such a project would really be the millions of dollars to do something like that. In addition, trying to get the railroads to cooperate and to agree to that sizable pipe of that magnitude going under their tracks would be a percolating effort and would simply, I think, go to add to the cost in terms of the safety factors you would have to build in to, and they would put a structure in that supports the rail lines and the traffic that would go over that on the rail lines. In addition, as I mentioned, all this water would ultimately go into Wilkins Run, which already has an erosion issue. Really, put us at a point of having to do some additional protection work in that stream, which is, from an accessibility standpoint, is very challenging, it simply just increases the cost and the difficulty of doing that, as well as the requirement of permitting you to do that. So, looking at the next option, we looked at, okay, adding a basin at what's NLA Real Estate, which is the formal technical name of the entity that owns that property. I think, as you all know, the property owner has expressed an interest to the township and the willingness to work with the township to provide that property to be able to use, to use as a basin. The question really becomes, can it be used as a basin? And as we sit here today, we really don't have enough information to know if it's a viable option. It looks promising based on some of the elevations that we have seen and that we know. It's not a non-starter from that perspective. The goal would be to install a basin that would store the stormwater downstream of 28th Street, decreasing the risk of flooding of 28th Street. This just kind of shows the example or the depiction of what could be done. The highlighted area is, would be the approximate limits of a detention facility that you could install. The kind of purple or pink line would show potential berm that you would put in there, so the basin could function essentially as the water begins to back up along that channel, it would come up to a point where it would start flowing into the basin. And then, hopefully, the basin would be cut out a little bit further so that the water would flow in, you might have a pipe going out, but it would try to hold the water in place to allow it to percolate and infiltrate and put it back out from a, going back into the channel or increasing the risk of flooding from that perspective. One good thing is that this area is, does have really good infiltration. For those of you who have participated or attended the meeting where that project was approved, the infiltration rates were pretty good, I mean, it's stuff that you just don't see. And what we have seen in the construction is they're pulling out gravel. I mean, it's really good material that really does, you know, I think, support the infiltration rates that they found in their investigation. So, the hope would be is that that same type of gravel is in this location where we would want to put a basin. The challenge at the end of the day is going to be, how high is the groundwater table? How much depth can we actually get to? And that's all going to tell us ultimately how much storage capacity we're going to have. But in order to do that, there are certain things that we need to do, and that we would propose to do. First, we would get permission to access the property so that we can, you know, do the investigation that's necessary to confirm the fact that it can be used. That would include performing a survey of their property to get a sense of where all the various elevations are. We'd also would conduct soil borings of the property for a couple of reasons. One is to identify the type of material that we have to see if in fact it's going to be a great future of infiltration. And secondly, to identify where the groundwater table is. I think I indicated earlier that there are some limitations placed on entities that want to put in stormwater basins due to groundwater tables. Typically, you want to stay within a quarter of two feet of the top elevation of the groundwater of the top elevation of the groundwater table so you need to identify where that is and design it accordingly. As a result of all this analysis says that it's viable, we'll obtain permission to use the property as a basin. We'll probably frankly do that at the same time we get access to the overall agreement. Then we would proceed to prepare the design and construction paperwork, get any necessary DVT permits. We have the meeting with DVT, the talking with DVT. We have a pretty good sense of what we'll be able to do. I think we can do this under a permit amendment as opposed to going through the whole permit process to speed up the process. And our goal would to depend upon how quickly we can get our results in the permit and the construction season. The goal would be to try to get this installed sometime in the late summer, fall of this year or in the spring or summer of next year. Depending upon, again, how quickly we can get this pulled together as well as the season we're talking with, we can then feel the construction time. The last option we looked at was removing the arch pipe. And I think as some of you know, this is a project that has already been put together and proposed. It serves as a PRP, a pollution reduction, it's part of our PRP or pollution reduction plan to satisfy the township's MS4 permit obligations to reduce sediment. When the new MS4 permit came out, the last round, certain pipes and streams had the ability to reduce sediment loads to then Wilkins Run was one of those. So this is a project that helps satisfy some of our obligations under the permit. Right now, we don't have enough information to determine whether it's a viable option to reduce the impact of flooding on 28th Street. So our proposal would be to, you know, evaluate with consultants whether that project will help flooding and ensure that it won't exacerbate flooding. If we determine that it's going to help flooding, we'll proceed with the permitting and final design with the goal of construction being negotiated in 2021. A little bit of a hiccup with this one is just because it's part of a permitting process we're going through with DVT at the moment. We've not gone back and DVT on our MS4 permit occupation at this point. And that's something that we'll have to work through as we go through with this process if we determine that it's a viable project. Frankly, if we find it's going to exacerbate the flooding, we'll have to go back to the drawing room in terms of PRPs. And we wouldn't proceed to install that project. Our sense is, because it was an open channel before, it should help in, at the minimum, maybe transfer some of that floodwater from the streets to that back there. So ultimately, as a result of all the analysis that we've done, we have recommendations to the Board of Supervisors to pass a resolution that would contain the following. First would be a directive to negotiate an access and easement agreement with NLA2 Real Estate that would allow the township to investigate its property and construct a stormwater basin if the property is viable. Two would be a directive to get quotes for the investigative work necessary to determine the viability of a basin on that property. Third would be a directive to issue a request for proposal for the design of the basin if it is determined that the basin is viable. Fourth would be to get quotes for evaluating the impact of removing the arch pipe on 28th Street. And fifth would be a directive to the Department of Public Works to create a policy that would do the following. One, it required them to maintain the open channel south of 26th Street annually at least once between May 1 and August 30 in accordance with our permit. Second would be to inspect a debris catcher within the channel on a monthly basis as well as before any forecast to make your rainfall event and after any actual significant rainfall events, which is essentially what we're doing now. And lastly, to inspect the following stormwater pipes on an annual basis for sediment buildup and if there is sediment buildup down, to remove that sediment. And that's the 65 by 40 inch pipe north of 28th Street as well as the two 24 inch pipes that feed into that from Contessa and Madera. And lastly, a directive to submit a written request to Pendot that did perform maintenance work on the channel on the north side of 26th Street to improve flows out of the piping system that runs beneath 26th Street. Presently, there's a kind of a scour area that probably should be addressed at some point. I think it's within the distance area that Pendot can do that without permit. That's something that the innovation looking through and investigating. We have a similar issue on our end in that channel that there's a scour area on the end of the pipe that comes out of, a pipe that runs south of 28th Street. Part of what we're trying to do here, I think we, have we all, I think you sent a notice in to do that work?
Is that what you're talking about, Mark? The outlet pipe that's right down is pretty much a whole range.
Right.
And it's virtually leveled from there to the inlet of 26th.
Correct.
To your point, it allows that water to release. But it's half full now, and I can only assume it's half full on the entire yard back.
Yeah, because as you look at the channel, there are certain areas where sediment has built up. And the goal would be to go through that channel and try to level it out and make it flow as best as we can within the elevations of the pipe entering and the throes of the pipe leaving. Based on the survey information that we have, there's only a few inches difference between the two. So there's not a whole lot of fall, and that's part of the problem. And when you look back to the 1900 draw, USGF survey, that kind of explains why there's not much fall. Because it kind of, you know, you see a lot of lines, and then it starts, you don't see a line for your business. And that's just telling you that you have an elevation change and it's just starting to flatten out. And every time you have, you know, it flattens out, it's always going to slow down and sink unless there's somewhere else to go. So that's essentially what we've gone through and what we've been working on. But it's taken a few months to go through the process and try to identify all the issues and so forth. We're happy to take any questions, folks, to have.
Excuse me, Mark.
We have about 20, 25 minutes.
I'm behind the curtain here, Mark. Just for the record, people, on Friday, April the 12th, we had a meeting. Of course, I wasn't at this meeting. We're talking about with Pendot officials and State Representative Ryan Bizarro's representatives. I think he was there, Senator Dan Loughlin and his staff or some members of his staff. So this was already talked among the parties that are interested in this. Of course, you folks are too. But we discussed it, and I think there was an agreement overall. At least that's what I was given the impression of there. I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot here, but we have the chief engineer for Pendot, Jim Foringer, who's out here in the audience. And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Jim, by no means. And Regina Smith is here from Senator Loughlin's office. And I think Ryan Bizarro, State Representative, did come in too. So if I'm speaking out of turn by saying something that isn't correct, please stop me. Mark, go ahead, take your questions, whatever you need to do.
Sure, and I would ask that, you've got a microphone, so if you could, I'll pass this to you. Give your name and then ask your question.
The drains, oh, Maria Laxley, 4230 West 28th Street. They did clean out the pipe that runs behind my house on West 28th Street. The road flooded on 28th and Contessa, May 12th, May 19th of 2018, and this year on April 14th, 2019. So your information on there did not show that, show that. And the township did know about it. So I just wanted the information updated. But you don't know what it's like anytime it rains to have the fear, is someone going to be trapped out on 28th Street? Because it gets deep very quickly. Am I going to have property damage? Am I going to have sewer water in my home? We have lost so much. And I just think all the other, we deserve the same as any other township resident, not to have to live in fear and not to have this happen. I've lived in my home almost 31 years. And flooding has, it used to be once in a while. Now it's all the time. But I'm not an expert. Chuck, do you have anything to say?
I do.
I'm going to pass it this way. Steve, have you?
Well, I just want the record to show a comment that this flooding is just not an accident. There was two things that happened that's flooding our neighborhood. One is Pendot, according to what he just said, necked down a 60 inch pipe down to 42 inch. 42 inch pipe has one-half of the square inches of a 60. There's only one way for water to leave our watershed. Our whole watershed from Colonial Avenue to Village, all the way up to 38th Street, there's only one way for water to get out. That's that 60 inch pipe. Pendot closed it down to a 42 inch pipe. And then another thing happened. Mill Creek allowed, issued building permits for more building than the storm sewer system can handle. So two things is causing our flooding. They necked down our pipe, and they built too much. And now they're talking about, well, it'd be expensive if we did that. This would be expensive if we did this. Well, cost should not be the factor. People got to quit flooding us. That's my comment. My question is, there's a lot for sale right now on 26th and McKee that could be bought, could be used as a retention basin. You could put a tank there and pump water up to it. Solutions, they're expensive. You got to quit doing it. Has anybody looked into putting in storm sewer pump stations? They're expensive, but they will work. A lot of municipalities are going to them now. I haven't heard mention of those. So there are other solutions. We got to get the water out of our neighborhood, whether it's open that pipe back up or it's put pump stations in. But these Band-Aids, I'm not necessarily against temporary minor help things like putting a little storm sewer behind the new apartment building or buying a lot on 26th and McKee and putting a little retention pond or a tank there. But the final solution, you have to get more water out of our neighborhood than is coming in. And these little things will not fix it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I think that's Chuck Felix. What is your address?
Chuck Felix, 2744 McKeever.
Okay, just for the record there. I think we're asking for names and address of the resident.
Tom Delfrat, 4357 West 28th Street. Mark, the question I do have, I mean, you've indicated that the channel alongside Joe's gym, you're going to maintain that and try to get that flow out. When you were giving a directive to Pendot to maintain the channel north of 26th Street, how far north?
I think they're, what they can do without the permit is about 50 feet.
Well, the 50 feet's not going to do it. I mean, if you're going to maintain that channel, that channel needs to be opened up from 26th Street all the way down to the flat area that you were talking, and I walked that. And it's debris stricken. So that's even retarding the flow of water north. Because all those calculations that you gave for the north side currently exist on the south side. You know that. So anything you can do on the north side is only going to help.
Yes, I'm Bill Denelco with Bill Denelco Escavating. I'm from McCain. I'm here on behalf of Dan Loughlin. He obtained a drawing from Mill Creek, and him and I went out and shot grades. And we came up with a proposal we'd like to show you. Now, keep in mind, we're not engineers, but we shot the grades. And we proposed, if you put the 60 inch, a new 60 inch pipe in from Route 20, we can get enough grade and make the system work at a minimal expense. I know you came up with five or six inches, I've seen on your grades, but according to your drawing, if that 42 inch pipe was lowered approximately three to four feet or ties in Route 20, I think everything would work. And that was Dan and my proposal to the township.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you for the presentation, Mark, and all the questions and comments from the audience. As a recommendation, and it is on our agenda here too, it's item number four. It's Resolution 2019 R23. It's a resolution regarding stormwater issues on West 28th Street. And I'll try not to bore you to death with all the whereases and all those salutations, but I think it's important to read this word for word here. And this is what the, is the action at hand before the board right now. It is a resolution, as I mentioned. Whereas residents of Mill Creek Township in the area of 28th Street between McKee Road and west to the cul-de-sac on West 28th have reported flooding on West 28th and nearby yards and residences as a result of severe rainfall events. Whereas in response to those reports, both the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, Pendot, and Mill Creek Township have investigated flooding incidents and stormwater system in the area. Whereas, as a result of that investigation, the Mill Creek Township Department of Planning and Development through the Township Engineer performed an analysis of various options aimed at reducing the risk of flooding in that area and has made recommendations as a result of that analysis. Whereas Pendot concurs with these recommendations. Whereas the Board of Supervisors has considered the planning and engineering departments and the Township Engineers' recommendations and takes the following action in response thereto. It is hereby, it is hereby resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Mill Creek, Erie County, Pennsylvania as follows. Item number one, the Department of Planning and Development, Township Engineer, and a Township Solicitor are directed to negotiate an access and an easement agreement with NLA2 Real Estate to allow the township to investigate its property adjacent to the open channel south of 26th Street that bisects the properties at 4319 and 4321 West Ridge Road, and to construct, if viable, a basin on such property to store stormwater during large rain events. Item number two, the Township Engineer is directed to obtain quotes for the investigative work necessary to help the engineer determine the viability of a basin on the NLA2 Real Estate property to be submitted to the Township Supervisors for approval. Item number three, it is determined, if it is determined by the Township Engineer that a basin is viable based upon investigation performed, the Township Engineers are directed to issue a request for proposal for the design of such basin, of said basin for the Supervisors to consider. Item number four, the Township Engineer is also directed to obtain quotes for the evaluation of whether the removal of the arch pipe north of 28th Street will help flooding and ensure that there will not be an exacerbating of the flooding to be submitted to the Township Supervisors for approval. Item number five, the Department of Public Works is directed to establish a policy for maintaining an open channel south of 26th Street annually at least once between May 1 and August 30 in accordance with a PADEP permit obtained by the township. In addition, said policy shall include a requirement that the debris catcher within the channel be inspected on a monthly basis before any forecast, before any significant rainfall is forecasted and after any actual significant rainfall event. Lastly, the said policy shall include an inspection of the following stormwater pipes on an annual basis for sediment buildup and sediment removal if necessary. The 65 by 40 pipe north of West 28th Street and the two 24 inch pipes north of 28th Street that convey stormwater from Contessa and between Madera Drive. And item number six, the Township Engineer is directed to submit to Pendot a written request that Pendot perform maintenance work on the channel on the north side of West 26th Street to improve flows out of the piping system that runs underneath West 26th Street. That is the action at hand here. So now that I've read that, do I hear a motion? I need a motion and a second on this action.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution 2019 R23.
Okay, do I hear a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Morgan, how do you vote?
I believe we need public comment on this item as well.
Do we need?
Mr. Shaw?
The resolution is on the agenda, so we're fine. We have a persistence to be heard subsequently.
Okay. So, Mr. Morgan, how do you vote on this?
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Okay. Mr. Bach, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And I also vote yes. The resolution has passed. Okay. Moving on, item number five, citizens to be heard. I think we heard some comments tonight here regarding this matter. Hopefully, we are in the right direction. I believe we are, based on the trust of our engineers and the consultation with Pendott, and I think we're in the right direction here, folks. So, we have a commitment from the Board of Supervisors in this resolution of the plan of action that we are taking. Moving on, item number five, citizens to be heard. Being none, call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. For a second on that?
I'll second.
Time is 6:50 PM. We'll have about a 10-minute intermission here and begin the regular meeting at 7 o'clock.